Here.
Shadi Fashakun.
Here.
Nikosi Nelson.
Trish Bodie.
Paul Gautier. Gloria Gonzalez-Talakia. Francesca's Romans.
Here.
It's 6:18 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We will now roll into citizens' comments. The board will now hear citizens' comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. This portion of the meeting is set aside for students, parents, and community members to speak to the board. The board prioritized student speakers, so student speakers will present their comments before others. In accordance with the district policy BED Local, public comments at a special board meeting are limited to items on the agenda posted by the notice of the meeting. For this July 17th special board meeting, the posted agenda items are limited to: Leading professional learning communities at work district-wide, and employment of the Cedar Park Middle School, just employment of Cedar Park Middle School, principal. Therefore, these are the only topics for which we will hear public comment this evening. If you wish to address the board on other topics, you may do so by emailing the LASD Governance Team email account or by signing up to a comment at a future regularly scheduled board meeting. Each person may speak for no more than 1.5 minutes. Speakers are asked to direct their comments to the board. During this part of the meeting, the board will listen, but it will not engage in dialogue or debate with the speakers. Pursuant to BED Local, the board shall not deliberate or make decisions regarding any subject that is not on the posted agenda. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a respectful and professional manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by their comments. Please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. The board has adopted specific complaint policies and specific procedures for presenting complaints about employees and school programs. The board expects all members of the audience to conduct themselves in a civil and orderly fashion during this and all other portions of the meeting. In order to maintain the appropriate decorum and productivity, excuse me all, for this board meeting, it's been a long day, disruptive conduct cannot be tolerated and will be addressed with reminders and law enforcement involvement when necessary. We will now call the first speaker, number one. You have 1.5 minutes to address the Board of Trustees. You will hear a chime when your time is up.
Professional learning is so important to create a successful school district. Alignment from the superintendent all the way to the teaching teams is vital to ensure consistency and clarity for everyone involved in the learning process. Collective responsibility must be taken for ownership of the students' successes and their failures. Lessons on this can be taken from the Steiner Ranch Elementary School where already existing amazing PLCs are in place. They have systems for effective communication and learning that stems from the leadership in the schools. The evidence of their successful PLCs is shown in their growth data over the last two years in both reading and math. They focus on building strong tier-one learning systems focusing on learning and using research-based technique strategies. They frequently monitor students' data and then plan for additional support and enrichment. Building and sustaining a collaborative culture is also so vital to creating a successful professional learning environment. SRE would be a great case study on how to create that culture within each school. Through the leadership of SRE, they have created a culture of care and encouragement for all individuals engaged in that process. This includes staff, students, and uniquely, the families and community. Including the innovative, collaborative, and eager voice of the families involved, they have an environment that cultivates joy, learning, and success.
Speaker number two.
Good evening, board members. I'm speaking today in relation to your agenda item on leading professional learning communities district-wide. As a parent in the Steiner Ranch community, I truly support your vision of building strong collaborative learning environments across Leander ISD. But I want to emphasize that vision is already alive and thriving at Steiner Ranch Elementary. The teachers there function as a true professional learning community. They collaborate, innovate, and know our students deeply. Families and educators are true partners. Closing Steiner would dismantle one of the most effective PLCs in our district. It would disrupt student learning, fracture educator collaboration, and weaken the school culture that already models what you're working to build across the district. If the goal is to grow a district-wide culture of excellence, let's protect and preserve the high-functioning schools that are already living out that mission, and Steiner Ranch Elementary is one of them. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak in support of our students, our educators, and the strong community we built.
Thank you. Speaker number one, can you come back up and finish your last 30 seconds? Our timer was on one minute.
That's okay, thank you. It's just one more paragraph. It's so important during tumultuous times to take the time to learn, to plan, and not make rash decisions. I'm glad to see you're taking the time to have a workshop on fostering responsibility on all levels. I hope that through this, we learn ways to include the community in that process so we may also help in the success of not only our students, but also our district's future. Mr. Rogers once said, "Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping." Let us be your helpers for a brighter future.
Speaker number three.
Good evening. Tonight, you're discussing professional development, the kind that strengthens classrooms and supports student learning. True professional learning communities do not stop at the classroom door. They extend to how you engage with the community you serve. As model parents of, I'm sorry, as parents of a model PLC, we're asking, "Where is your professional learning with us? Where is the shared collaboration, the two-way communication, the transparency that a strong PLC requires? We've come to speak, we've written, and yet it feels like we're speaking into the void. When the recommendations were made May 29th, there should have been town halls already on the calendar. Instead, we're now one month from school starting, and we still have no structured opportunity to engage in dialogue. This silence makes it hard to believe our voices are being considered. A professional learning community, the kind this agenda is focused on, requires trust, consistency, and open communication. Right now, that's missing. If you're serious about partnering with families and modeling district-wide PLCs, the work has to start here with real conversations before decisions are made. Thank you.
Speaker number four is not here, so it's speaker number five.
Good evening, board members. I stand here not only as a concerned parent, neighbor, and advocate, but as someone who deeply believes in Steiner Ranch's professional learning community. Steiner Ranch Elementary has cultivated a deeply rooted culture of care and encouragement that extends to all members of its community. This commitment to relationships is evident in the supportive and inclusive environment throughout the campus. The strength of SRE's professional learning community is especially noteworthy. Our teams engage in purposeful collaboration anchored by clear systems for communication and shared learning. The consistent growth in reading and math achievement over the past two years serves as compelling evidence of the impact of these professional learning communities. Instructionally, Steiner Ranch Elementary maintains a sharp focus on building strong tier-one systems. Educators emphasize learning clarity, implement research-based strategies, and regularly monitor student progress. Data is used intentionally to plan timely support and enrichment, ensuring that all learners are seen, known, and challenged. With that said, please keep Steiner Ranch open and let our community continue to grow.
All right, we are done with citizens' comments, and now next is the board workshop on leading professional learning communities at work district-wide. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Chris Clark.
Thank you, Madam President, board members, and cabinet members who are present tonight. I just want to set the stage for our work this evening. In December of... Do we need to wait?
The board will go into recess because we don't have a quorum, so we will wait.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me why, what is, we don't have a quorum?
Trustee Gautier left to go in the hallway and not participate in this board meeting, so now we have to stop the work of the board.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, guys.
It's 6:32. We're back from recess. Trustee Romans joined us, and I'd like the record to show, trustee Gautier is not here. Dr. Chris Clark, take it away.
Thank you, Madam President, board members, and cabinet members. As I was saying a few minutes ago, in December of 2024, Brenda Cruz, Dr. Benneker, myself, and Dr. Talakia, who was our president at the time, attended PLC, leading PLC's district-wide boardroom-to-classroom training. It was a two-day training. We're getting a shortened version of this tonight. And we all immediately knew that this was going to be beneficial work for our district and for our board. And so we have been working since that time to bring this learning to our leaders in the district, but also our leaders who sit on this board. So we have Janelle Keating here tonight, who is going to lead us through that work. She spent the entire day today with our leadership team in the district, which included all of our campus principals, district leaders, even our operational departments were there as a part of it. Our board president, Anna Smith, joined us for the day. So it was a great day of learning, and so the next step is to provide some of that learning for our board tonight. So I'm going to tell you just a little bit about Janelle. She literally wrote the book that we are learning from tonight, which has the same title as the workshop or the training. She's written a few other books as well. And she was a superintendent in a district that was a highly functioning, it was a model PLC district, and people continue to go and visit this school district to learn from them. And so we're happy to have her here tonight to learn from her. My favorite thing that she told me about herself when I asked her what she would like me to share about introducing her is that she was a mom. And that really motivated her to create a district and a school that was good, what she thought was good enough for her students, or her own children, and therefore good enough for her students as well, so tying those personal connections. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Janelle Keating. Thank you, Janelle.
All right. I just want to tell you that I'm honored to be here tonight and honored to come inside the district. So Superintendent Gearing, Board of Trustees, thank you for allowing me to work with you tonight and for spending the day with your leaders. I was incredibly impressed at the engagement. In fact, I had a little tough time getting them to quiet down at times, and they shared with me during the breaks and then at the end of the day that they weren't being disrespectful. They were talking, engaging in what the content was, and they wanted to continue those conversations, which also shows me that there's a healthy school culture in your group or your team of leaders there. So tonight, we're going to take some time, and we're just going to build shared knowledge. That's what we're going to do. Build shared knowledge about what does it look like to align learning, to align learning experiences that we want for all kids across the district. And we know that it shouldn't, your school that you attend, shouldn't be, you know, third grade should be third grade, and we're going to be talking about that tonight. The address doesn't matter, but what kind of experiences can we guarantee all our kids across the district? So we're going to go ahead and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about my own experience growing up. So I'm number nine of 11 kids. I have eight brothers and two sisters. My dad, when he was about 96, I asked him, I was doing a keynote at a school board conversation or conference. I said, "Dad, how long were you on the school board?" And he paused, and he said, "Too long, Janelle." And so he did several stints. He said, "I was there for 12 or 15 years, and then I stepped aside." And then periodically, he'd be called back in to replace someone that maybe moved away. And so I have great appreciation for your work and great appreciation for the time that I spent as superintendent with the board in White River. Now, a lot of this work, I want to tell you, it's going to take some grit. It takes sticking with it. You know that. You heard from the school, that you have schools doing this work right now. And we want to talk about what does it look like for all schools to be able to be engaged in this important work. Now, we're going to start today because I think it's really important that, well, I said it takes grit, it takes sticking with it, it's day in and day out. You're not going to do something new next year. Your every day is a formative assessment. What's working? What needs to be refined? If things are working, we want to do more of that. But it's all about sticking with it. It's about staying focused, as you know. Staying focused on the right work. Now, we're going to jump in, and we're going to have the opportunity to take a look at a team. And before we do that, Dr. Richtifor and Dr. Bob Aker are the co-architects of this work. And the late Richtifor would always tell us, "The key to improve student learning is to ensure more good teaching," or as your superintendent shared with us today, "More, like, we want to facilitate excellent learning in our classrooms." And can we do that? That should be the focus more of the time. So getting clear on our why, and we're going to be talking about that why piece tonight because we want to articulate that, we want to communicate that, and your community needs to know why you're doing this as well. So... So we're going to ground ourselves in effective collaboration. And I'm a big believer in the power of examples, the power of videos, so that we can watch it. So you're going to take a look at, we're going to see a team of teachers, a fifth-grade team that's coming together just on a regular one-hour-a-week collaboration. And really, they're coming together to talk about their kids, to talk about their learning, and to talk about their practice. That's what's really happening, and to make decisions where they're going to take action. So we want to be just having this time to think about, if everyone's collaborating across your district, there should be an impact, right? We're spending time with this. An impact on our practice, an impact on student learning. At this table, you're going to see a well-trained team leader. We are big believers in creating layers of leadership. In fact, one video I showed today, it's maybe the third one, that was taken in 2017. The youngest teacher there, I think it was year two, she's still part of that team. But there are two of the teachers that are now principals in our system, and one of the teachers that's a national math leader across the country. So these layers of leadership opportunities that we're providing are really important. So you're going to see a team leader. You're going to see some district systems. We know now, we're not saying, "Shoo, shoo, teachers, go do this," that the district office has a powerful impact on the being able to support them. So you'll see some district systems there. We'll talk about that. And then we have to think about, you know, how, as a Board of Trustees and superintendent, what's our role? And we'll revisit that numerous times tonight. So again, this is a fifth-grade team. You were, we're not going to watch this for an hour. You're probably thinking, "All right, let's go get dessert." No, we are going to, we're going to watch maybe four minutes. So let's go ahead, and we'll play the video.
What did our kids do well?
I thought they did really well on the first, like, they had strategies to multiply decimals, and they have strategies to, like, add and subtract.
Like, their strategies looked good, even if they got to the
Like, their strategies looked good, if they, even if they got to the wrong, like, they chose the wrong equation to solve, they weren't solving what they did correctly.
I agree. They did have good strategies.
I felt like they were pretty successful, too, on dividing a decimal by a whole number.
Yes.
I felt like that went really well.
How were they with organizing their work? Like, just to be able to follow how they solved the problem to be able to then share their...
I felt like most of what I noticed was the standard algorithm.
Okay.
So...
And then a lot of inverse to check it in mine, like, on all four of those.
Yeah.
A lot of them use the inverse, which I wish a few of them would have used the fraction strategy that we, like, forced them to use on the first...
None of, none of my kids used fractions.
I know. And they were so successful in that first formative, using the fraction strategy as their second strategy, so that was kind of unfortunate that they didn't do that, but we'll get to that part. They all just kept it in decimal form and used the inverse.
I felt, I saw that same exact thing. A lot of them used the inverse, and...
Which is great.
Yes.
But they weren't using, they weren't thinking about, like, plugging in their answer for the variable to check, like...
Yes.
Yep.
Not using the original equation to check. So it's like, using the inverse operation is great to see if that solution is correct, but not checking the actual problem.
Yep.
That's kind of what I noticed. I thought that it was really interesting that for the first, like, 1A, almost every kid used the algorithm to multiply, but then for number two, which was also multiplying a decimal by a decimal, almost none of my kids used the algorithm. They used the area model.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I only had a few use the area model.
Yeah, I feel like all of mine are really trying, I mean, they're really using standard algorithm.
Yeah.
Sometimes they're multiplying now.
Was there a pattern in the kids' use of the area model? Do they, are they more concrete thinkers?
I think at least for her class, it's been encouraged, if they struggle with the algorithm, to just fall back on the area model.
I just thought that it was interesting, like, here, Marco used the algorithm correctly, and then used the area model. Like, it's the same type of problem, decimal times a decimal, but I just thought that that was really interesting, that a lot of them did that.
That is. It's almost, a lot of mine use the area model as their second strategy on number two.
Supporting strategy.
But...
Okay.
I guess I did have some of my kids use the area model.
I was really proud of seeing Tyson H.'s work still. He is still not, like, he was using the standard algorithm and is not fluent with his facts yet, but he was making tallies to skip count still. Like, he still has strategies, even though he doesn't know his multiples.
They are getting better, I feel like, even Ozzy, like, he's knowing the process better. He's so close with it, it's just, if we just have a little more time, he'll get there. Because even for number two, he got $87.50. So he did the algorithm correctly, he just didn't know his decimal placement is wrong. But he is getting better. This one, he got $87. So he's doing the algorithm correctly, which is great, because he's been working on that so much with those four.
Amy, you are now putting notes on every kid? Like, even the ones who got everyone right, now you're just writing, those kids need extension work to support their learning?
Yeah.
It just keeps getting better every time we do these things.
So at your tables, let me come back here for a second, maybe. I'm doing a little dance here with the slideshow. Oh, let's go back. So at your tables, I want you just to debrief that video clip a little bit. So what did you see the team doing that would have an impact on learning, on their professional practice? Just, Molly was the team leader there, how is she leading that team? There is a district system in place there, and we'll see if you can talk a little bit about that. It's how she was leading, the protocol that she was using. And we talked today that in this work, we should leave behind the word "documents," et cetera. As an educator, this is a tool that they're using. This is a tool to help that team be effective. So in our system, whether you're teaching preschool or you're at the high school, everyone has a way to talk, the same way to talk about our kids and their learning. And that was developed by our team leaders, and we wanted a standard of care. In the beginning, there were teams that didn't need a protocol, but then you'd arrive at a team, and there was a lot of deficit thinking about kids, and I would be thinking in my mind as I'm at the table, "I'm glad they're not talking about my tailor." So then I knew that as a leader, we needed to make a change in that particular area. So that was the basic, the question she was following. So just at your tables, talk about what you noticed, what you might wonder about, what If you're in the middle of something, and you need two more minutes, just let me know, and I'll step back and give you that time to communicate. So having an understanding of what effective collaboration looks like. That team is the highest-performing team in Pierce County, which there's about 190 schools in Pierce County, Washington, so the highest-performing fifth-grade team. So doing really good work on behalf of their kids. Now, as board members, you get lots of questions, like, "Why should we be doing this? Why are we engaging in this work? Why are we giving time? Why are we spending resources on training, et cetera?" So being clear on the why is extremely important. So the first piece of that is, this is really important because it's going to be the vehicle to better Tier One instruction. And I like to always call Tier One "first best instruction." We want to plan, and we want to go in the classroom and do our best job, and by that, that collaborative piece, talking about your kids, talking about your learning, talking about the strategies that you're going to engage in with kids. So it's first best instruction. Sometimes I see places where Tier Two and Tier Three, those second and third attempts, become a crutch. We don't want those to become a crutch. There will be children that need more time, more support, a different way, but we want to put our energy and efforts into Tier One. The second reason we want to do this is this work is the vehicle to improving your adult practice. I often say that our kids aren't going to learn more until the adults learn more, and the adults learn together. So weekly, they're engaging and taking a look at the data and talking to each other, and if I'm working and I'm on a team, and I see my partner's data is better than mine, the bottom line, we turn and, "Talk to me about what you did. Will you show me that?" Sometimes I'll walk in classrooms, and I'm very fascinated by the anchor charts that are on the wall and different pieces, and it's, I'm always wondering what that looks like, you know, when they're teaching each other how to use those charts effectively with kids, because they're ultimately there so that the kids can use them without the teacher. So sharing those strategies, building your professional practice is the second reason. But the third one is the most important. It's to ensure that our students learn grade-level standards and above. Not in one school, every school, not in one classroom, every classroom, not with one teacher, but with every teacher. So this is going to be our vehicle. Your goal is not to become a professional learning community. Being a professional learning community is your vehicle to more kids learning more and learning at higher levels. And this is a place where you really do have to take a look at your data. What does the data tell you? There will be areas of emphasis, areas where you're going to want to work on maybe more professional development, but this is also the area that we talk about, what are the dreams for your kids? And when we talk about, can we create systems that are good enough for our own children? So I think just engaging in that conversation at your table right now, you know, this is, we need to have this in front of us, this is something, we'll give you the slides, you can make handouts, just for your own use, but you're going to get questions on, "Why is this so important?" And it's the three items up above, but it's really about, what are the dreams for your kids? So let's just engage in that. What are the dreams for your kids in this community? What are the dreams for your kids in this community? Yeah. Well, that. I didn't. Of course. That's. And like. Up. That's what they're. All this. I'm thinking. I'm like. I'm like. And. I'm sorry. I think. I know. Well. Yeah. 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 Yeah, that's. All right. I'm going to give you about two more minutes. I think. Yeah. 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 Sorry. Yeah. Then. Yeah. I wish. Yeah. That makes. That's. Yeah, they are. For us. But it's. That's. Not going to be date anymore. How many is the lawyer? What are you? Yeah. Um. Between the. Down there. Bow. So that's. For the. Yeah. Yeah. And then. So. One inch. Yeah. I need. It needs to be everything. The. She's. I just want to like. And it's. What do we? I need to. I was. Either. I don't. All of them. Two. Yeah. It's. It should. I think. That's. And. Pass. Provide. I said. Wait. What's the worst? Yeah. That was somebody. Thank you. So, yeah. Provide a. Last. Yeah, what is the next step? Yes. Yes. And. So. I do not. Whatever. Can I go? My. Okay. Please. Hello. So. I'm sorry. Yes. And. They. Guyer and. Or. Yes. I just. I don't. I don't. Yes. That's. Yes. It's. More. Yes. I was. Yeah. I know. I know. That was crazy. I do want. I didn't. I did not. Yes. Yeah. Give them. Very. Yeah. They. Yeah. Sorry. Five. And. It's. Something like. Look. Down. Somewhere. Did it fall? Thank you.
Okay, what we're going to do is I'd like you to stand. Leave your chart paper on your table. So and so that we can see it. And. We're just going to rotate around the room. And how about if we just go to the right? Go ahead and rotate to the right. And I want you to be thinking what patterns are emerging here? As you take a look at each piece. Oh, we can go this way. Let's go this way. All right. This right. There we go. Should have said.
Were you with that team? It's like. Didn't she really know when her kids? Although.
Yeah. You didn't know who was.
Jeff answered, asked a question about Molly's kids. The other teacher answered questions. Well, for her kids, this is what we.
Yeah.
Okay, when you're finished, let's take a road. Go ahead and rotate to the next chart.
Okay. She turned off. I saw that. It's. I mean.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and shift again. Take a look at the next chart. They have all these little notes on here. That's right. Those are those later trigger thoughts that they were putting down there. Ask coaching, support, providers. Okay, and let's let's rotate again. What does that say?
Follow through. That's even a part of the chapter that I read. It's when he gets. Just to start here, there's always an intention that I set. And this one. Start doing that. And it's interesting about that part.
Chapter.
Yeah. This is about we're doing this work for the. So we think we're going to have.
That's. That should be circled, right? Yes. Okay, let's rotate again. Ah.
I'll just stick around.
So what is. What you guys. I just. Uh huh.
Okay, we should land back at our own table now. And I want you to just have a discussion about what patterns emerged. Maybe the language was a little bit different, but the meaning was the same. So what patterns emerged? What did you see as you visited each table's chart? When you're talking about the superintendent, one of the things that emerged for me? Vision, allocating resources. Definitely I saw in many charts. So just open that conversation. What patterns emerged?
Are we talking about.
Just with your just with your table. What? What?
Yeah. But I. I feel like it really had the same general topics. And that's all of that was really just. Kind of.
Do you remember? Um. Okay, at each table, at the end of each table, we have examples of what your district leaders came up with when they were working on this same activity today. And we're going to take about five minutes to take a peek at some of these. So you might just look at one or two, but let's go ahead and open them up. And you'll have that opportunity.
This would be a great activity. Yeah, everywhere. We all have different faults. I'm a president. Teacher. Coach. Share it. Ah huh. Here. So. I think. As a. I would see what. Yes. And see what emerges. I was. The district. District. What they did. Because someone. They. And someone. So this would be a great activity. Looks like. Any activity. Yes. They don't. They don't. We're.
This is maybe.
Just. I was just reading that. Yes. Cause you're involved, right? We wanted. See if that. It's like. Program. Do you like? I mean. If. But some. If they don't want. If not wanting to get rid of. They need to. And we've been into our camp. Yes. Who did this? Can I? Well, this is. This is very. This is amazing. Look at this one. This one's so good. If we're not. And something that. Yeah. It's not a one. If it's not giving. You know. For.
Okay, I'll just give you about another 30 seconds. About another 30 seconds. So let's go ahead and wind up your conversation. And I'm going to push us toward more things to think about. Now, one of the things that we talk about that we know is one of the biggest equity issues in public education is the lack of the guaranteed and viable curriculum. And so I want to talk about that vocabulary. So when I'm talking about the guaranteed curriculum, we're talking about essential standards per grade level. And are they paced out in a way that teachers can teach them deep and well? And that all kids can learn what's essential at their grade level? Knowing that we will have students that will need additional time and support. So let's think this through. Now, this is something that happens in school districts. So we're going to use the example of Sarah. Yeah, Sarah, here you are. Sarah was a little girl. And that Sarah goes to School B. So we see School B there. And School B teaches equivalent fractions in February. Now, and Sarah's parents purchase a house in School A attendance area. And she moves to School A in January. Now, keep in mind, School A decided they wanted to teach equivalent fractions in December. So then the question is, when is Sarah going to learn equivalent fractions? And she's not. Now, it, there's even more to this story because we're going to sit Sarah for a state assessment. Where likely, we will see work around equivalent fractions. It's a big, in my own state, it's a big chunk of the fourth grade test. So likely, not going to do very well. Now, it even can be more bothersome. Because at some point, a letter's going to go home to Sarah's parents. And it's going to say that maybe she didn't do very well in math. When the reality is, she hasn't been taught that big portion. And also, these students are moving grade level to grade level. And we're, you know, kind of poking our own holes. And so that's why that pacing guide is so important. So what we'd really want for Sarah is that she'd slide across town and she'd enter the same standard of instruction. The teacher may have a different way of teaching it. They're using, you know, the district adopted resources, all those things. Maybe in a little bit different place. But we're going to, we can ensure that Sarah will be taught that important standard. So sometimes you could ask, why do we have to be teaching the same, this standard at the same time as across town? And, well, it's because we want to ensure that all kids have learning experiences around this standard. Someone once said to me, Janelle, we don't have very many kids that are moving across town. And my answer was, if it were your child, what would you want? I'd want to ensure that they were taught the essential standards for their grade level. So when we think about this, a goal should be that fourth grade is fourth grade. Same essential standards, same high-quality assessments, aligned to those standards. Because a child's address should not determine what they learn. And that's part of the work that you're already doing here. But it's why we really, truly do want them to stay on pace. And why, I'm a big believer in point-in-time assessments. Where there will be a point in time when we need to check on how our students, all fourth graders, are doing with that particular standard. And those assessments should be created guided by the district. But the work of the assessments would be the grade level teams across the district. Now, one of the things, and we may end up sliding forward here for just a second. Because I want to get to, I've had a request for this, a particular slide. So I'm going to go to the request because I, I want to get to that before the night. So the book Leading PLCs District Wide is arranged in a way that we believe alignment in a district can happen. And for a good chunk of my career, we started with the collaborative team. It was about the team out in the building. And many of the teams were doing very well, but some teams weren't. There was uneven implementation. Some team leaders were very equipped. Others were not dependent in the system that they were in. But in 2025, we know more, right? That the district plays a big role in aligning your, the work of that collaborative team. And it starts with the team inside this room today. It starts with the superintendent and the board of trustees. That we want to be the best team in the district. We're going to have norms, accountability protocols, operating principles. We call them different things in different states. We want to set some goals, both some short-term goals and long-term goals. And that slide is coming. We want to, you know, you can read what we have there, but we also want to celebrate. There's achievement in this district every minute of every day. And are we celebrating that? Achievement with your little kids reading, achievement what's happening in your art classrooms, achievement what's happening in your CTE programs. But are we stopping to celebrate achievement? Now, the next piece is, in that orange rectangle, that was a big piece of what was happening today. But, and we had additional folks in our meeting today representing all of the departments in the district. But for this particular work, we're going to talk about the district-level team and your principals. That is a place where you're going to want to invest. Because we shared today that your principals will not lead work well that they don't know. And in fact, what happens is they can botch it. And what we know about teachers is they remember it for a really long time. And it makes it really challenging for the next person to come in behind them. So in this meeting, the principals, it's a learning meeting. They're practicing and rehearsing the work. They're anticipating questions that the staff members might have. I want them leaving that meeting essentially confident to lead. That's a meeting that we're going to look at learning data. We're going to look at learning data across the district. So we're going to select key units. Maybe it's the equivalent fractions unit because it's important. And we're going to take a look at how all fourth graders are doing at each of our campuses. And then really talk and learn from each other. Then we get to that green rectangle. And we, the orange rectangle we read today, that was chapter two in the book. The green rectangle is the building principal and their school leadership team. Some of your schools may refer to them as their guiding coalition. So when we think about that, we think about a team leader for first kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, special education, your counselor. It's your instructional coaching staff, right? You want your teachers. You know, when we talk about, how do you select these teachers? Well, number one, we want to select teachers that are getting results with kids. They're moving our kids. We want to select those teachers that have positive influence on other staff members, on members of that team. So we began there. There's an organizational nature to this work. So being organized is important as well. And then you go to that brown rectangle, which is where all the good stuff is. That's where our kids are. That's the collaborative team. So by the time it gets down to that brown rectangle, you don't have team members saying things like, why do we have to do this? Why is this important? It, we've worked on it with the principals. We've worked on it with the leadership teams in the building. And now that leader, that team leader is advancing that work with the collaborative team. And I won't go through all of those pieces individually. But I want you to pay close attention to the bottom of that graphic. Again, we said the brown rectangle, that's where the kids are. That's your student learning data is there. That's the timely information that we want to know. Because as a board, you should be asking your superintendent, are the kids learning and how do we know in a timely way? And that's the, those common end-of-unit assessments. Now, what, once they give those assessments, some of that data will be reviewed in their school leadership team. Because the purpose of a school leadership team or the guiding coalition is to improve learning for every student in the school or on that campus. Now, some of that data will be moved to the principals' meeting. And we had an example of what that might look like today. And so that the principals can be, can learn from each other. And then some of the data will be moved to the board and the superintendent. Now, there's so much data in a district. The question would be, well, what la, what data do you want to look at? What data do we want to study? What data do we want to engage in? And it's data that's aligned to your goals. So, because you can't look at everything. Now, when we talk about data that's aligned to your goals, and I'm going to give you an example. And then we're going to watch a video clip of what this looks like for a board. We had too many students that were not reading at grade level in K one and two. So by the time they were getting to third grade, we had a lot of kids that could be a year or two behind. And that third-grade teacher was presented with lots of gaps to close as well as teach third grade. So we set a goal that we wanted ninety percent of our kids leaving kindergarten, meeting the grade lover standards. And we isolated some skills inside those grade-level standards. Put some very short assessments in place. Now, what about the other ten percent? The other ten percent, we were measuring or teaching and checking on as well. But maybe they weren't there yet. So that's an example of a goal. We had goals about all, all ninth graders on track to graduate. And we really had to peel, you know, unravel that one. Goals around kids earning dual credit. Goals around industry certifications in your CTE programs. So if it's important to you, and it's important to the learning of our kids, set a goal. I shared with your principals today that you will never meet a goal you don't set. So set a goal and work toward it. So now, we're going to take a look at that. What does that really look like to, when it comes to achieving the goal? Okay, we're going to go through this one here. All right, that's a slide someone's been asking to see. Okay, so at the top, you're going to set your goals. But, and you're likely going to align resources to those goals. Time and energy is going to be aligned to those goals. But when thinking about that ninety percent reading goal, or maybe you're going to have a hundred percent reading goal. Okay, what's the district office team's role? If you're working in Title One, what's your role? If you're working in special education, you have a role here. And so your goals need to align to that goal. And oftentimes, in district systems, there's a lot of silos. And the silos are created by your budget codes. And one way to get your district team out of silos is to set a goal that we're mutually held accountable for. And we're not going to, you know, sometimes I pick fun of the state assessment. But we're not going to treat it like the state assessment. We're not going to wait till the end to look at it. Those goals and evidence toward meeting the goals should be looked at every single month. Like, where are we? Now, the district team, if, you know, they're working, they're aligning their goals. But your schools are also writing goals. Student achievement goals. The overall achievement goals. But they won't meet their goals until the teams meet their goals unit by unit. And when I talk about unit by unit, I mean essential standard by essential standard. And guess what? The team can only meet their goals if the kids meet their goals. Now, so the goal is set at the top, and it flows down. But everyone is working toward that particular goal. We all have a role. We are the reciprocal accountability to our, to our kids achieving. So let's just talk at your tables. And then let's open it up to some questions if you have questions. And then we're going to look at a video clip of a board taking a look at the goal. All right? Talk at your tables. What makes sense to you about this? What are you thinking? What's resonating with you?
One of the things with district goals, so it's, it's not, and I'll bring this up with the whole group because I want to bring clarity to it. The, the knowledge about what district goals the board and superintendent should set would be based on the data of what you're seeing in your schools. I mean, there, you would need an achievement. And maybe that's part of the, I'd like to see all your goals. It'd be kind of fun to take a look at, actually. But, but the district office is going to weigh in and give the board advice about, this is what we're seeing. Because you have a lot of data to take a look at. And help you set that particular district goal. But it should be something that, you should have goals that also the schools are working on. Because it's all about student achievement. So, but I would, I'd be happy to, like, I'd, I'd be interested to see, okay, where are the goals on the ones that you're seeing from the state and et cetera? But what I'm talking about in this particular graphic is really student achievement goals or goals that lead to more kids' achievement. Like that dual-credit goal, that the kids are earning industry certifications. We also had a goal at one point in time because we didn't have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. That had to be the first goal. We didn't have any common assessments. So we put a goal around that. So, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just going to hold this conversation. Because it's, when you're setting a district goal, you're looking at your data. And your district team- And your district team, in fact, it was very well written on this chart over here about the district team feeding the board the information they need to be able to set those goals. So that's really an important piece. Now, I want to show you a couple of things here before we get to the video. Again, this is the piece about, you know, we work in our silos and the way to get out of the silo, common goal. And then we all work toward that and there will be a tremendous impact. And also, the budget will be more effectively used. Again, here's some examples of goals. At one point in time, we didn't have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So that had to be a goal. We wanted to make sure that we were implementing Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. All of this, these goals were fed to the board by the work of the teams and the district office team. Now, let's see here. Sarah, I'll get that to you. And again, you've heard me say this a number of times. That whole, we should be asking constantly, are the kids learning and how do we know? That's not a answer we want in May. Because we can do something about it along the way. All right? Now, this has to, these are examples of what we would see from the board. This is a benchmark. You have a benchmark. There's different benchmarks that districts use. So in the fall, we'll be able to see how the schools, that's that first benchmark they give the kids. And then we're going to give that again in January. And as we know, there's a purpose to benchmark assessments. That's different than the common assessment, but we want to triangulate that data. So let's just take a look. We're just looking again at two schools. And then we have questions. All right? Wow, we're closing gaps, but look at what's happening in School B. And so it generates a conversation. Generates a conversation about resources as well sometimes. Then we look at another example of an assessment. All right, this is a second grade fluency piece. This is right when we were coming out of COVID. And one thing you need to know about Washington State is we did not come back to school until end of March of that fall. It was almost a full year that we were out of school. But the work of the teachers was incredible. So if you take a look when we assess the kids coming back in April of '21, you can see that district-wide, about 50% of the kids were where we wanted them. But by the end of second grade, take a look. Those second grade teachers were closing gaps on kids. Right? So the, and this, this data is again aligned with that 90% board goal. Now, who's talking about this data at the board meeting? It could be a principal or members of the principal team. It could be someone from the district office. An instructional coach who works closely with this data would maybe be presenting as well. And so you see this again when we're looking at accuracy. Where they, where the kids were when they came back to us in 2021. And then what happened by the near March? We still, in Washington State, we still have three, almost three more months of school to go after March because we have April, May, and most of June as well. But we're checking along the way because we want to be able to target the skills kids are lacking. And then you're going to see the comprehension piece, which is important as well. And there's many assessments that are attached to these. Now, we're going to just take a minute, and this is the end of 2022, where we're going to report out on the goal. How do we do? This time, you're actually, for this particular one, you're going to see the math. Because there's a, there's a 90% goal for math, too. So let's go ahead and take a look at the video.
All right, so next up is Sarah.
Oh my gosh. You're going to see the impact right now. Okay. So, Mr. Curran, we'll get started with you. So many of you know that the board has a 90% reading and math goal for our K two students. As sending those kids, the belief is we want to send them to third grade, ready to go. We know the power of being a good reader and a mathematician. So we're going to get a chance to see the results. And we'll start with math. So Scott, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I feel like you guys are going to be sick, man. This is now the seventh time you've got to hear my wonderful voice. So a little background on the 90% goal in math. The 90% goal in reading had existed for a year. And Janelle reached out to me last year of like, we should do the same thing in math, especially for K two because three, four, five have SBA testing. They have like some other external results to just measure. And just like, are we making sure that our students are prepared for the next grade level? So, once Janelle brought that to me. Thinking backwards, by the end of second grade, if you are unable to add and subtract within 100 specifically with multiple strategies, you are likely to struggle tremendously in third grade. The way that the standards are written, it is an assumption that you are an expert at understanding place value within 100 and you can really apply your knowledge of that. Within that as well, what you're seeing here is like that green standard, that's our 90% goal in second grade. But that yellow standard, that relates incredibly well to the 90% goal in the grade level below. So by the end of second grade, we need students to have mental strategies to add subtract within 20, which is way more doable if by the end of first grade, you can add and subtract within 20 within these specific strategies. The strategy is written here in first grade. That's mentally what we're all probably doing when we're adding subtract within 20. You might be counting on. You've all seen on your fingers or counting back. You might be making 10, adding some more. You might be breaking up a number to say, I know four plus three, so I know 14 plus three. That's exactly what it is. Underneath that, that counting to 120 and being able to count on is incredibly related to kindergarten, being able to count to 100 by ones and tens. If you can do that, you transition really well in the first grade. You have this prereq skill. And additionally, in kindergarten, we are also having two 90% goals. One for counting and then one for being able to fluently add subtract within five. So, last year, here were our results. So despite circumstance, because of some of the ability that we had to get back in schools and teach students, we were incredibly close to hitting these 90% goals for a number of reasons. So as you're looking up here, we're in 85% of counting to 100. This was 84% of being able to add subtract within five. Accuracy from first graders, students who missed the end of kindergarten was less than we would want for obvious reasons. They weren't exposed to some of this more rigorous content. And then we had 70, nearly 77% of students were able to add and subtract within 100. Now, last year, the question became, but how close were we? So, accounting for all those students who were in that two-five range that you've heard me talk about time and time again of like, they're just not there. They have the skills, maybe it's the application, maybe it's one piece. Those are the students that we knew, man, with just a little bit more, they could do it. Here are the results of this year's 90%. First of all, kindergarten teachers, massive shout out to you. If you are a kindergarten student at White River, there is nearly a 95% chance that you were able to count to 100 by ones and tens. First grade teachers, that is going to help tremendously. Second grade teachers, that is going to help tremendously with that addition subtraction within 100. So huge, huge shout out and celebration as well. Being able to fluently add subtract, we are incredibly close right now. Again, we assess that as like a hiding game. If I have five cubes, I show you two. How many are high on my back? And we also require kids to explain how you know. Fluently is flexibility, whether it's counting on or counting back. You saw there's a variety of strategies that you could use. First grade, we have improved upon last year. We're at 63 and nearly 64% of students there. A lot of it right now is just accuracy. What I'm hearing so much out of the field is, they can do this. They just didn't do it on this one problem, on this one day. And it's, it is frustrating for teachers to see that. But by having like our high expectations of scoring, like, it is continuing to improve year over year. And huge shout out to the first grade teachers for just all they're doing and accomplishing as well. The whole point of the 90% goal, though, is in our system, are you leaving it better than you're entering it? We are nearly at 85% of second graders being able to add subtract entering third grade. That lets third grade teachers focus on multiplicative thinking, multiplication, division, fractions, foundations of really understanding the deeper aspects of math. So huge, huge shout out for a systems level to all of them.
Okay, at the beginning, before I give you a chance to discuss, you heard Scott say, this is the seventh time you've seen me. That's because we have seven units in elementary math and we are really working hard to improve that system. And so he reports out every month, grade level by grade level. And sometimes the board has the actual assessment in front of them so that they can see actually what the kids are doing and some examples of student work. Now, before I give you a chance to discuss, I want to take a look at this quote where it says, this is from the board president Denise Vogel. She basically says, "As a board, we strive to function as a high-performing team, working alongside the superintendent on the same goals as every team in the district, ensuring high levels of learning for all students. Our daily tasks might look different, but the goal is the same." Now, I want you just at your table to talk about, what'd you see in that video clip? What'd you notice? Maybe what are you wondering about? We're getting close to our time here and I want to be able to answer any questions you have. There's, could stay another couple of hours, but I know we're not going to do that. So just talk at your tables. What did you, what did you learn? What did you see? What are you wondering about? Just give you another 30 seconds. Okay, I want to talk to you about, you saw the triangles. Those are your, the equivalent of your benchmark. We present the data in a different way. That's the three times a year. But what's really powerful is what Scott's talking about. When he's meeting with the board every month, those are common assessments based on the standards that they're working on. So we have knowledge, standard by standard, how the kids are doing. Now, I want to close with just a couple of things. So we go back to, how can you help? How can you help us move this work forward? Part of it is allocating resources. And in a district, your greatest resource is time. And so one of the first things when I'm working in districts, we always do what I call a time study. Let's see your time. Let's see how you're using your time. Let's see how, what impact we're getting from how we're allocating that use of time. Your teams today, we talked about, what you saw in that video clip, right away, the first video clip is what we call process collaboration. That's when there was evidence of learning at the table and they're really analyzing it and they're working toward talking about what kids are going to need more support or extension. But also, there's time often needed to create these products. Like, when, when will we create the assessments? If you have to relook at your essential standards, then that takes time. Also, to really talk with your team here in this room about establishing goals, or I call them focus areas as well. Like, do we have some focus areas that we want to make, ensure that we're aligning the work to? Also, on your agenda, that PLC has a place, that we want to see the work of the teams, that you want to see the data. And what I know in this work is, as a board, it's fun to see the work from the actual teachers doing the work. So if they're presenting it and the teams, that's fantastic as well. Also, monitoring the student learning data. Again, that's that question about, are the kids learning and how do we know? And then when you're looking at your curriculum adoptions, we know so much more now with this work where not only is the standard being taught, but let's create that learning target progression and actually, target by target, go into the resource and see how that, how it's taught. Because in my career, I've heard a number of times, Janelle, this resource doesn't do a very good job of teaching it. And I'm thinking, man, I wish that we'd have known that before we adopted it. And the way to do that is to pick an essential standard, take a look at all the steps. take a look at all the steps kids have to do to meet that standard, and then take a look at how that particular resource. So, asking those targeted questions when we're adopting curriculum can be helpful as well. It makes us do the right work. And then, set some collective commitments. And collective commitments are just a series of if-then statements. If the district goal is to have K-3 students reading at grade level, then the superintendent and board will. What are we going to do? What's our part? If the goal is to have more students career-ready, then? And the then, the secret about the then, it moves to the adult behavior, all right? And then, that piece of, if the district goal is to implement professional learning communities district-wide, the superintendent and the board of trustees will. All right, I have no more for you tonight. Unless you have some questions for me. Oh, yeah, absolutely. And we'll make sure you get these, and you have these slides, actually. Couple of them that are important that we missed tonight that could go back to. All right, I don't know. I'm going to pass this off to, back to the superintendent and board president.
Thank you so much for today's workshop. It was really, really good. And I hope the board's ready to get to work, because my head is exploding with great ideas. So, y'all get ready. It is, what time is it? It is 8:23 PM, and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Codes. Texas Government Code 551074, deliberation and consideration employment of the Cedar Park Middle School principal. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session.
It is 9:01 PM and the board is returning to open session. Board members, do you have any motions related to closed session?
It is 9:01 PM and the Board is returning to open session. Board members, do you have any motions related to closed session agenda items?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Magdalena Gistel for the principal at Cedar Park Middle School one-year probationary employment contract for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2025-26 school year.
Second.
I have a motion from Trish, a second from Shawde. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Four ayes, motion passes. It is 9:02 PM and having no further business, this meeting of the Leander IC Board of Trustees is adjourned.